Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Tyler has been excused and Mr. Gorillin has been excused. Mr. Preston?
Here.
Thank you.
First on the agenda, we have North Country Community College President Steve Corral, and also Bob Farmer, Chief Financial Officer Chuck Van Ander. After their presentation, the Board will need, I'll need a motion to go into an executive session to discuss union negotiations that are currently ongoing with North Country Community College.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us here this morning to give you an update on North Country Community College. Also like to thank members of the Board Supervisor and particular Mr. Randy Preston for joining us on February 17th to begin the celebration of our 50 years as a community college. And we appreciate everyone who showed up for that event. We had about 150 people there. It was a great opportunity to bring retirees, alumni, members from the legislature, state and county together to talk about where we've been and where we're going. So, thank you all for being there for that program. In your packet, we have some information for you. With the North Country Community College logo on it, on the left side, you will see one of the things we shared at that program, which was the economic impact those Country Community College had on the region, which was about $47 million. Was the last thing we did to study for 15, 16. We are an important vital part to the region, not only in providing a quality education for our students, but also having an impact economically on what's happening in the region. We also wanted to share with you today a few things. One, what's going on with enrollment and how that ties into our budget and finance, because we are an enrollment-driven business as a college. You will see in your packet on the right side, a chart, looks like this, with some green lines across it. We wanted to, this is a report that SUNY put together about a month ago. And what it asked is, looking at enrollment over the last so many years there, what we budgeted for each of the community colleges for 16, 17, this current fiscal year, and where do we think we're going to land? And you'll see, most of the community colleges are going to land less than where they hoped to at the beginning of the year. And our particular college is actually the highest one, with a 16% differential. We budgeted for 900 FTEs, and we're going to land someplace over 1,000, 1,050 is what we reported a month ago, and it's going to be someplace in that range. So, we budgeted really low last year, largely because our faculty has said to us for the prior few years, that we had gone through periods where we budgeted on an enrollment number, and then we didn't make that number for the fall semester that followed. So, this past year in the spring, we budgeted for 900. We came in at 1050 for the fall, so we were flat from the prior year. But we end up with a surplus, which is why we're showing this, we're showing the way that we are in this particular report. You should also know that a year ago, North Country Community College was the smallest in enrollment for the 30 community colleges. And in this year, 16, 17, we're now the fourth smallest community college in New York State, which is not a marketing ploy for us, by the way, with our students, that we're the fourth smallest. But it does at least allow us to demonstrate that we are starting to stabilize enrollment in these challenging times. And we continue to look at that as we move forward. I'd like to jump to the next slide and just hand out you have there's another slide, but just to show the active programs we have for the last four years, where they are with enrollment. You know, enrollment for us is constantly changing, we're bringing new programs on and seeing how we're trending with programs out there. So, from 2012, 13, in the far right column, we were at 933 FTEs. By the way, that's how we budget with the state, FTEs, so it's full-time equivalent enrollment. And that doesn't include our bridge students in the high school, which is about another 200 FTEs annually. And of course, for 15, 16, we were down at 783. And you can see the red highlighted programs are the ones that are costing us more to operate than we're bringing in enrollment to fund those programs. And the blue and green ones are where we're either flat or actually making money. And the reason why we're showing you this graph, one, is that we have, we've had declining enrollment like other institutions, so we may be more stable now than some of our peers. But mostly how our business works, like many other businesses on the planet, is that it's about program mix. Which programs are we making revenues, that subsidizing programs that cost more money to operate? Where we're losing money. At the end of the day, you want to end up with a balanced budget, and that's our goal. You should also know that we have three new programs that came on in 16, 17, that are not reflected in this list here, and those are Environmental Studies, Child and Family Services, and the new online degree program in Social Sciences and Humanities, which is important to us, because we have seen our number of students enrolled in online classes triple over a three semester period, mostly coming from the northern counties of Clinton, Essex, Clinton, Franklin, and St. Lawrence. In other words, folks out there are saying, we may not be able to drive to a college, but we want to take classes online to pursue a degree. Most of those folks are non-traditional students, they are 25 years of age or older, looking to raise their credentials to go for a new job opportunity in the region. The last thing I'd like to mention about enrollment, is that even in these times of declining enrollment, one of the reasons why we are stabilizing for this year, which is not reflected in the report you saw a moment ago, is we also have a new program on the books that launched here last week. It's called the Second Chance Program. It is funded by the federal government. It's a Pell-funded program that allows folks that are incarcerated in the four prisons in our backyard, in Malone, Serenac Lake, and Ray Brook, to enroll in classes to achieve an associate's degree that they can use when they are released from prison in about four to six years. The federal government has funded us at 160 FTEs a year, which is not even included in the numbers that we have here. And so, what does that do for us? Well, one, it allows us to go back to our history. We were one of the best providers of prison education programs in New York State in the 1980s and 1990s, so the federal government cut it then. So, now we have this program back for two years, and this really helps us do a couple of things. When Bob goes over our fund balance and our accounts for the last few years and where we're heading in the future, the prison program will allow us to use that revenue to position ourselves to get ahead of enrollment in the next few years. If you remember, I've talked about this when we've been here in the past, if we decided tomorrow we're going to launch a new program, it goes through an internal process with our faculty, they have to approve all new programs that go forward, it goes to SUNY, and then it goes to state ed. And then, when it's approved, only then can we market the program, which usually takes about eight months of marketing to get people in the seats. It's usually a two-year process. So, if we're looking towards the future, what we decide today affects us two years from now. Or what we did two years ago affects us today. We wrote the grant two years ago for the prison Pell program. So, understanding program mix is really important to us, and how do we plan and move our institution forward. We continue to look at new programs for 17, 18, and that's more work that the faculty will continue to do. When you look at the picture, if the community colleges in New York State have declining enrollments, and North Country has also had that experience, how does that play out financially for us? And I'd like, Bob, to address the next handout that you have, which is a fund balance report, and how we close each year financially for the last few years. So, I'm going to turn it over to Bob. Before I do that, we didn't introduce everybody here, but Chuck Van Ander is our Chair of our Faculty Senate, and Tim Burpo is on the Board of Trustees and Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees at North Country Community College. And as we both, we all know here, that if there's an opportunity for Chuck, a faculty member, or a Board of Trustee member to speak, they will. They will probably have something to say in a minute.
Good morning, thank you. The next sheet in your packet shows the results of operations compared to budget for North Country Community College. In 2012 and 13, we budgeted for a $5,000 surplus and ended up with a $232,000 surplus. In 2013, 14, we budgeted for a $637,000 loss, and ended up much better than that, with just a $148,000 loss. In 2014, 15, we budgeted for an $850,000 loss, and ended up with a $191,000 surplus. 2015, 16, the most recent year we completed, there was a budgeted loss of $200,000, and we're going to end up with an $820,000 surplus. And then, for 16, 17, the anticipated surplus is $900,000 with a, just about a break-even budget. In regards to the fund balance, after the 2015, 16 year, that'll bring our fund balance from about 3.2 million up to close to $4 million. And then, after the 16, 17 year, we're anticipating our fund balance to be in a neighborhood of $5 million. So, that's where we're at with fund balance and our budgeted operations. For 17, 18, we drafted the budget, first drafts that we're going over with, long-range planning internally, and we have a small surplus budgeted for 17, 18. I'd like to give you an update on capital projects that we've done in the past year. When I came to North Country Community College and reviewed the capital project funds, we had an unspent balance of $314,000 from prior years. When you add in the 16, 17 county sponsorship funds of $100,000, and then the capital portion of our charge-back revenue of $60,000. In addition to that, those items, working with Albany and the folks in my office, Albany reported to us that they found an additional $300,000 between Essex and Franklin Counties that we hadn't used in the past, and you may have recalled some resolutions coming through in the previous months, getting the approvals to use those funds. So, when you take all those numbers and add it up, it's just about $775,000, and then the state matches that, so there's another $775,000. That gives us funds available to spend on capital projects of $1,500,000 and some change. So, what did we do with those funds? In the past year, we put in a campus-wide electrical upgrade, most notably a backup generator that backs up the entire campus except for the dorms. That came in pretty handy this past weekend when we had 400 folks in our gym from the World Championship Snowshoe Event for dinner, and the power went out. So, that worked perfectly. So, the backup generator was about $300,000. We had to remove some underground, some really big underground fuel tanks that cost $65,000. We replaced the whole heating system in the gym for another close to $90,000. We did some ventilation work to our administration building, Hudson Hall, for $60,000. We put in some, started to redo carpets, but we did a hallway in the administration building and a classroom for $20,000. We had to relocate our Rad Tech operation, that cost $30,000. We did some paving. We had to buy some new maintenance vehicles, which ours were really, really old, that was $90,000 to buy a couple of new trucks that could plow and sand and that stuff. All the small equipment involved, classroom upgrades, we're looking at every, at every campus, all of our classrooms need new desks and chairs. They're all old, they're all undersized, so we're looking at that right now, and that'll probably be around a couple hundred thousand dollar investment. In our fitness center, we had really, really old equipment in our fitness center, and we replaced all of it for $50,000. And our athletic folks are just really happy that they can show new recruits some really nice equipment. It's a very small fitness center, but it's well-equipped now. We did some IT upgrades with our phone system and our network systems for $85,000. And we're also upgrading some software for our payroll and financial aid software, which will cost us a little over $100,000. And I think, a couple of things we're looking at for next summer is to put lighting on our soccer field, so we can use that for more hours, and possibly get some transportation needs. We don't have anything, we don't have anything in the way of a bus to transport kids for activities and stuff like that, so those are a couple of things we're looking at for the future. Do we have any questions?
Any questions? Any of the representatives from our country? I have just one. Can you provide us with numbers of how many Essex County and Franklin County residents attend our country?
Essex. You can send it over today. And it tends to be about 70, 75% of our students attending our institution are from Essex and Franklin County. We can give a breakout.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll need a motion to go into an executive session to discuss the union negotiations. Move by Mr. Morrow as our second to Mr. Wilson to the leading discussion. Be none in favor? Okay, the time is 10:47. I need a motion to go back into regular session. Move by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Giordano. All in favor? There was no action taken in the evening. And now, I will move on to Mike Mastarinos. Give us an update on the fishing bill. Michael?
Good morning. I just want to start quickly, and I don't want to take up a ton of your time today, go through this as quickly as possible, but there's a bit of misinformation out there that I've, that we've seen recently in our newspapers regarding how this process happened. So, for those that don't remember, I just want to go through it quickly. When we first started this project, our first estimate included moving Cornell Cooperative Extension into the new structure. We quickly discovered that if we did that, that we would not qualify for the CDBG grant that we received due to the benefit group. At the time, in order to qualify, your beneficiary group has to be 50% low to moderate income, or be an automatic qualifier, which is the elderly group that we represent through this program. The group that Cornell provides services to would not have qualified. That's why we pulled that out. It was really to save our local taxpayers the $400,000 that we were able to garner by doing so. So, I just wanted to touch on that quick. Couple of weeks ago, we came to the Board, well, it was probably a month ago, and we had some information for you to look at regarding the structure, the aesthetics, what it would look like. We took your recommendations, we went back to the drawing board, and came up with a couple of alternatives that I think will really work well. It's important for you to understand that when you look at the cost on this presentation, that the cost proposed is really for the structure and those associated utilities that go with it. The costs that I've given you on your sheet include equipment. The costs that you're going to see in the presentation do not. You might ask, why? Really, because the equipment is something that we're going to have to do no matter what. You're not going to, regardless of what option we go with, you're not going to see a change in floor plan. The floor plans are the same regardless of the option chosen, and those equipment pieces are also the same. And they're items that we need for various reasons, some because our equipment is really old, and others that we need to be able to stay in service while we make the move. So, I'm going to ask that we give the floor to our architects, AEDA. We have Jim here and Shane here, and just to review those alternatives quickly. And we also have Jim Dugan here, and Chrissy, and Chris Carroll. If you have any questions, we'd be absolutely happy to answer them as we go along. Do I need to offer courtesy of the floor, Mr. Scottzavaver? No, okay, come on up, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Thank you, the Board, for giving us this opportunity. My name is Jim Abdella. I am engineer and project manager with AEDA. I also have Shane Chatel here, who is the architect with AEDA, to review this presentation. I guess we'll start right off with the project site. Site, as proposed, is located in Westport, in the fairgrounds, west end of the racetrack, directly adjacent or south of the campground. Here is an outline of the proposed site plan. You can see where we have access in the front for parking and vehicle loading, the nutrition program, and then we have area in the back for delivery trucks and employee parking. This was the original floor plan that was outlined for the building. We did have sidewalk around the perimeter or the entrance door, and then the delivery, or the door for nutrition products leaving. That would be the delivery door in the back. Original elevations, once again, you'll see where we had sidewalk around the side and front. We had a simple roof structure with overhang to protect the sidewalk area for, once again, loading vehicles and the nutrition staff. This was the alternative floor plan that we came up with after the last time you saw the initial floor plan. There were some comments in regards to further protection for delivery vehicles, for vehicles that were going to be taking in nutrition products. So, we ended up creating an overhang for two vehicles, eliminated the roof overhang and the sidewalk component, and then we also provided an overhang for deliveries, which we'll see in the next rendering. Actually, I apologize, we're going, actually, this is interior views of the floor plan, gives you an idea of equipment, how the equipment fits. The nutrition program has a number of carts, which they have to have location for within the floor plan. This gives you another view of looking in, inside the facility. Another perspective. Okay, and then this is one of the revised elevations or looks for the building. Once again, you can see the added overhang for car, for loading the cars. You can see a change in the roof line, more of a hip-style roof, give you a different gable, end siding, and give the building a little different look. Second option, where we added a little more architectural features, we had the finials up above to match existing buildings within the fairground. We added a stone perimeter, once again, to dress up the look of the building a little bit. This essentially summarizes the options that we just looked at. The first option at the top was where we started at, the basic design. Total cost, $1,186,575. That matches the original estimate that I believe you all saw around a week ago, or a couple of weeks ago. Second option B, essentially is the building with the overhangs, the change in the roof, however, does not include the stone or the finials in the roof. The other option, the other item that I'll point out as well is that this building floor plan had an additional 100 square feet for additional operational space, as was pointed out as would be beneficial. That cost has a total cost of $1,202,231. So, that, you know, those changes represented in that increase. The third option, that is essentially where we add the finials and the stone perimeter, and that jumps the price up to $1,251,323. Once again, we tried to keep the estimates apples-to-apples, you know, between the options. So, that's where you end up, where you see that we had the exclusions down below for geotechnical testing, special inspections, and the kitchen equipment, which are included in some of the paperwork that you have in front of you for the total overall cost. We want to keep it so that, you know, these three options are equal when you're looking at them. As far as the project schedule goes, we tried to match the schedule with, you know, what was outlined in our proposal that we responded to for the county. Essentially, we're looking at, you know, 50 working days from the approval of this schematic design, for design, another 20 working days for the bid phase, 10 working days for the contract administration and getting the contract in place, and then another 120 working days for construction phase. That essentially puts us out to a December 1st delivery of this project, you know, should we meet all those target dates. And then, we have another 20 working days for project closeout.
Yeah, in order to keep with that project schedule, what we're really looking for today, hopefully, is the Board to give us a decision on an alternative that works. December, it absolutely has to be complete by, in order to protect our $400,000 grant that we received from Community Development Block Grant. You know, the options are not a lot of difference in cost between the second one and third one. With the stonework and the finials, you're potentially looking at an extra $50,000 in project cost, but I do think it probably looks more like our floral hall building does over on the fairground property, and the aesthetics of it certainly do make it an attractive proposal. The second one's pretty darn good, too. I think if you wanted to save the $50,000, that would be fine, but that's really the differences. Now, look at your cost sheet, too. I don't want anybody to think that the costs are the costs. We're really looking at over $1.5 million, once we include equipment, regardless of the options we choose.
Can I ask a?
Go ahead.
I'm just curious, Mike. Those estimates would indicate, regardless of how the building looks, that the construction cost is $300 a square foot, gentlemen?
Yeah, and I think.
Is this building, doesn't look so specialized to me, that it should cost $300 a square foot?
Yeah.
To construct?
I think if Jim or, and Jim, they would be more equipped to answer that than I would.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't include anything, any kitchen stuff or whatsoever, so I understand that, but it just seems like a fairly high number. I mean.
Mike, could you flip back the screen to those options, please?
Yeah, somebody go ahead and address the, Mr. Palladie's comment.
Wish I had a better answer on the cost, other than the fact that I've been doing it for a long time. it for a long time. We've got a pay prevailing wage rate, you've got to meet the requirements of CDPG, you've got to meet the Iran Divestment Act, you've got a lot of paperwork you have to do. I'm sorry, but it's gonna be expensive.
Will this go out under one general contractor? You got to bid out for the electrical, the heating, all that separately?
We've got to follow Wickslaw time, which is those, at least four different contracts.
Well, I thought they changed the threshold on that now where you can-
No, if it's $500,000, if the cost of the building is gonna be more than $500,000, then you've got to follow Wickslaw, which is the four separate contracts. You got costs just in the administration of having four contracts instead of a single GC. Prevailing wage rate, I mean, right off the bat, you're another 20% higher at a minimum just in paying prevailing wage rate than if you were doing this private cost. I'm hoping the numbers are high.
It's like building a bridge.
Yeah, we aren't gonna know until we-
Gotta use, gotta use the contractor that's three times higher because of state requirements.
There are some things that we think we can do with our own forces as we start to bid it, you know. This cost does include, this cost includes all the paving that's on the site, you know, we can do some of that ourselves. If, once you guys select a schematic design, then we'll start the process of seeing what exactly we can do with ourselves to try to bring this cost down.
Is there sewer on that site?
There is.
Okay.
Both public watering and public sewer.
Well, Mike, you mentioned earlier about there's a lot of misinformation out there and stuff, and it's funny because just what Roby just asked was the same thing. A gentleman came into my office last week, seen these preliminary costs and said, excuse me, this is ridiculous. He's comparing it to a house that he built. And I disagree with you, Jim. I don't do that very often. Prevailing wage doesn't push your contract up 20%. Roby's right, it doubles it or triples it. Private contractors, I get $25 an hour working on a private home, now automatically get $50 to $75 an hour. I used to do contracting. I'd rather work for a county or state government than work for a private home because I got way more money. This is the problem with the state. They put out a little grant money and then they say, there's only a few projects we can do. That's because they put out prevailing wage, and I know what pushes that, but if they didn't do prevailing wage, we could do three times as many projects. So, this project right here should probably be half that amount if we could do everything ourself, but then we'd get in trouble with the unions and stuff because we're not supposed to do that, you know. But I gotta say, in all reality, it's a good price, I think, for what's being done here. But I also have to be realistic because of what people, and we are looking after taxpayers' dollars, and I myself, looking at this, it's only $50,000, like you said, Mike, but do we really need stone around the bottom when we're looking at taxpayers' dollars? Do we need finials on the top? I would support the 1.2 million, not the 1.25. I couldn't do that because I am looking at tax, and there's any way we can save, it is a big project, it's a small amount on a big project, but that's what we have to look at, saving a little bit of money here and there because there's gonna be some more outs, we might have to cost something else. So, that's my opinion on this.
You're probably right on the cost, Jerry. I'm just trying to just talk straight up labor at a minimum, it's gonna be 20%.
I bet you it's gonna be double that. If we could do it regular without prevailing wage, and go prevailing wage, it doubles it all the time.
A couple of specifics about the job that may cost a little bit more. We plan on framing the building out of light gauge metal. As some of you are aware, the issue with the current nutrition building is mold. If I frame it out of metal, I don't have to worry about mold. Obviously, it's gonna have the ventilation that it needs that that current building doesn't have. It's gonna have a 10-foot trust bearing height, so the walls are a little taller than your typical house. We're planning on in-floor heat so that the heating system is completely out of the way and very, very cost-effective. So, we're planning on the space between the ceiling, ceiling's gonna be at eight feet, the trust bearing at 10 feet. We're gonna run all of our ductwork in that two-foot of space up above. We're planning on using a FRP sheet on all of the walls. That's that heavy plastic sheet that you might see in certain bathrooms or restaurants or other areas, so the whole place can be cleaned basically with a fire hose if we have to. Some of those are factored in the cost and hard to see in that, this schematic design that you see on it.
Mr. Marnell?
Yeah. We consider using a gambrel roof, a barn type roof, and it would give you the look like the second picture. The first one, I wouldn't vote for anywhere, that's terrible. But the second one, gable edge tilted down, it makes it look a lot more attractive, but about possibility using a gambrel truss, and also that would give you, you could have storage on the upstairs as a three-quarter size of a building, it's wasted space.
I get your comment, I get your comment, and without a doubt, we can look at those things. I think that a gambrel roof is gonna make that unit quite a bit higher. As it is, it's a 612 pitch, it's pretty high. Gambrel with, is probably gonna get us close to where we start to meet the APA threshold. And as far as storage upstairs, what do you, I'm not sure what we would store in a building that's a food service place up in the attic space, plus building a stairway to get there. But we can consider it.
Mr. Law?
The problem, I got something else, but the problem with this, keep considering stuff, you've got a timeline there that you need to meet, and if you keep going back to the John Board, we're never gonna get it done. But other high costs in there, you're gonna have a high cost fire inspection system because of the-
Commercial supremacy.
Yeah, you know, that's gonna be a high cost. You're also gonna have more costs for the electrical part of it because you have all kind of outlets and kitchen appliances going in there, so that's way more than a normal place. So, you gotta factor in all those things with this building.
I think there were some comments about windows before, too, and we really tried to, we tried to add a few windows, but at the same time, keep it, keep space for operations. This building is mostly about operations and up to 1,000 meals a day that you gotta produce.
Okay, any further questions? Mr. Marle?
Are you looking for a motion to get this going today?
I am. I'd like, I'd like, I'd like a motion.
Mr. Palladie?
Why am I being forced to vote on this? I mean, is that what you're gonna do, vote on it? What do you think, Jim? I mean, I'm not in a position to tell what's best for this damn thing.
The only thing we're really asking you to do is choose between options, whichever option.
What's the best option?
I agree.
I agree with Jerry, what Jerry says, I like three.
Three.
I think buying $50,000, that's if we think-
I mean, it goes with the fairground.
I would do it. I think it's a better looking building, and the public will be happy with it in the long run, it matches the barn roof.
Exactly.
Advantage to doing that. I would like to see it done that way.
Well, if somebody puts three on the floor, I'm not gonna vote against it because I know we need this building going. It's, to me, it's just a matter of spending more money for looks, that's all.
Yeah, no, I disagree with that. And Roby, the operations don't change. The floor plan's the floor plan.
All I'm asking, what do you recommend?
I recommend three.
Okay, now let's try to get control here again. We'll go back up.
Are we done with the slides?
Yeah.
Okay. Jim, just on review, we've mentioned before about a possible, for lack of a better term, tool shed, a haul shed where the additional vehicles would be protected. We're meeting that requirement with just those two car bags on the side, that's, yeah. The way that what we're trying to accomplish, or would it be better if we had protection?
The way they load vehicles right now, there is no roof over the vehicles as they load their food right now, and they typically load, and maybe Chrissy is here from Office for the Agent can tell you better about operations, but it seems that if they can load two vans at a time under that, that it's the best of both worlds without adding something the whole length of the building to try to get five or six vans under at a time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I make a motion that we accept the third plan.
There's a motion on the floor that we go with plan number three. Is there a second? Mr. Marnell, discussion?
I do need 12.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carry. Okay, we'll move into resolutions.
Resolutions recommended by the Human Services Committee, authorizing a budget amendment in the Mental Health Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $106,880 on expended 2016 New York State Vital Access Provider War Funds.
Move by, Mr. Harrington, second by Mr. Mahoney, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing a budget amendment in the Mental Health Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $7,020, New York State Office of Mental Health.
Move by, Mr. Mega, second, Mr. DePaul, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing a budget amendment in the Public Health Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $18,830.83. Do I tell that, this needs to be amended, but will I read it first?
We've just removed the unexpended 2016 language. It's not really unexpended because it was not put in, it's self. This is simply a budget amendment that moves that money in, so just, we regard unexpended.
It's just accepting the budget amendment.
Motion? Aye. Second by Mr. Harrington, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Authorizing a budget amendment in the Public Health Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $9,372 on expended 2016 disrip funds.
Move by. Mr. Marnell, second by Mr. Third. Keep it on. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Authorizing a budget amendment in the Public Health Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $12,165 on expended 2016 National Association of County and City Health Officials Accreditation Grant.
Move by. Mr. Mega?
Aye.
Mr. Giardano?
G or Giardano?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Authorizing the Public Health Department to reclassify a registered nurse position to an occupational therapist position and authorize the hiring of an occupational therapist at the hourly rate of $25.78 per hour from budgeted funds.
Move by, Mr. Marle. For a second. Discussion? Mr. Harrington, discussion?
Is that for a 40-hour week? That's, actually, that may be 37 and a half, I'm not sure. Yes, 37 and a half hours, and as you recall, this was a reduction in the rate from the registered nurse rate down to the 25.78 for the occupational therapist. Linda's feeling was she could recruit at the lower rate for the therapist.
Thank you. Further discussion? Be none in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Authorizing a budget amendment in the Office for the Aging Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $8,520 to federal aid BIP grant, and further authorizing the chairman or county manager to execute a contract with North Country Home Services through September 30th, 2017.
Move by, Mr. Mahoney, second by Mr. DePaul, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Authorizing a budget amendment in the Office for the Aging Department, increasing revenues in the amount of $15,955.28 and appropriations in the amount of $7,046.82, reducing a county match of unexpended federal aid BIP funds.
Move by, Mr. Merrier, second by Mr. Harrington, discussion? Be none in favor?
Resolution of appreciation and congratulations to John O'Neill on his retirement from Essex County Government.
Sandra, the second?
Authorizing a budget amendment in the Transportation Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $205,000 on expended 2016 grant funds.
Move by. Mr. Mega, second, Mr. DePaul, discussion? Be none in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Resolutions recommended by the Public Safety Committee, authorizing the Emergency Services Department a sole source purchase of a voting comparator, display, and alarm notification in the amount of $95,681, and the purchase of remote consoles in the amount of $11,698 for Motorola Wells.
Move by. Mr. Merrier, second. Mr. DePaul, discussion, the county attorney has some discussion.
Just for clarification purposes, is the display and alarm notification in the amount $95,681, who are we purchasing that from?
Same.
Who?
It's Motorola Wells.
Who's Motorola Wells, is that Wells?
Wells Communication.
Yeah, but now they're called Motorola Wells?
It's Motorola Equipment.
They're the sole shareholders.
Yeah, it's probably just Motorola equipment from Wells Communication.
That's one guy, it says Motorola Wells.
Linda had said it was called Motorola Wells.
Okay, so we're purchasing it from Wells or Motorola?
Wells.
You're purchasing from Wells Communication as the authorized Motorola dealer.
Right. All right. Further discussion? Be none in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Resolutions recommended by the Economic Development Committee, authorizing the approval of a 10-year payment and move taxes pilot agreement with Chiaplane Valley Milling in the town of Willsboro.
Move by, Mr. Marle, second by Mr. Marle, discussion? Be none in favor?
Aye. Authorizing an RFP for ESPC engineering in the amount of $231,148 as part of the community rising projects in the towns of Jay and Keen.
Move by. Mr. Wilson, second, to DePaul, discussion? Be none in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Resolutions recommended by the DPW Committee, authorizing the chairman or county manager to file an application for the state assistance from the Household Hazardous Waste State Assistance Program and authorizing the execution of the associated state contract under the laws of New York State.
Move by, Mr. Palladie, second by Mr. Marle, Mr. Mahoney, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Authorizing the purchasing agent to have to bid for water meter, gate valves, ductile iron pipe, and ductile iron fittings at the Public Safety Committee.
Move by, Mr. Mahoney, second, Mr. Palladie, discussion? Be none in favor?
There are no resolutions for the, from the Personnel Committee. Resolutions from the Finance Committee to accept, adopt, and place in file the 2016 annual accounting of monies received and dispersed by the Office of Essex County Clerk.
Move by, Mr. Merrier, second by Mr. Marle, discussion? Be none in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Authorizing the county clerk to issue photo identification cards for a fee of $10.
Move by. Mr. Marle, second, Mr. DePaul, Mr. Mega, discussion? Be none in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Authorizing the county treasurer to pay the rebivi charges to the village of Port Henry prior to April 1st, 2017.
Move by. Mr. Mega, Mr. Marnell, discussion? Be none in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Resolution accepting and placing in file, this should be the 2016 real property annual report.
Move by. Mr. Marle, second by Mr. DePaul, Mr. Whitson, discussion? Be none in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? We have a bunch of resolutions that our county manager has requested as all supervisors were given a packet, an explanation as Gary's resolutions, so I will go down through the memo. Is that the way you want to look at it?
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
Judy, we will go through the-
Can we just read them?
Yep.
Okay. The first resolution is authorizing the purchasing agent to award a purchase order to Aquaneering Incorporated in the amount of $17,990 for two aluminum transportation, transport tanks with funds coming from the unexpended 2016 budget funds.
Move by, Mr. Marle, second by Mr. Mega, discussion?
Well, again, this is just the plan that we were, we had originally talked about buying a new stocking truck. This is buying the equipment to put on a leftover truck in DPW, which saved the cost of the new truck.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to award a purchase order to Robert H. Finkin Sons Incorporated in the amount of $135,600 for the 2017- Finkensons Incorporated in the amount of $135,600 for a 2017 Kobalik, Kobalikol SK-140 excavator with funds coming from the 2016-17 equipment bond.
Move by, Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Monty. More discussion? Be none all in favor?
Aye.
All's carried.
I'm sorry, just for the record, Dan, the low bidder failed to meet the specs correctly.
Right, there were actually a couple of other low bidders that failed to meet the specs that were asked for specifically identified by the low score.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to award a purchase order to Robert H. Finkensons Incorporated in the amount of $52,716.40 for a new 2016 Bandit Model 15XP drum-style chipper with funds to come from unexpended 2016 budgeted funds.
Move by, Mr. Monty, second by Mr. Morrow. Discussion? Be none all in favor?
Aye.
All's carried.
Resolution authorizing the firm of AEDA to proceed with final design construction documents for this project. So we already did that one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's it in that packet.
You got the resolution authorizing a contract with Part D Advisors.
Hold on, the next memo?
No, it's on the bottom of that one.
Can't see. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Authorizing a contract with Part D Advisors for reopening services relative, related to our Medicaid, Medicare Part D reimbursements for all years of allowable under Medicaid, Medicare Part D rules and regulations.
Move by, Mr. Miga, second by Mr. Merrihugh. On the discussion, I, when I first read this, I wasn't quite familiar, understood what we were doing here, so I'm gonna let you in.
Again, as I mentioned to you, I've mentioned to you in the past, we self-insure on drugs. Um, we, we essentially buy all of our drugs for all of our, um, dispense within both the retiree, our regular health plan, but also our retiree. Under the Medicaid Part D portion of our retirees' plan, if you just, if you can justify that your drug plan that you are providing is, exceeds or is better than Part D, you are allowed to apply for a subsidy from the federal government for those drugs which you buy that would normally be eligible under Part D. We take about $140,000 per year on Part D drugs reimbursements. What's occurred in the marketplace over the last few years, actually over the last five or six years, is that there are now firms which do reopening services for those drug claims. So essentially, we would pay somebody to go in and reopen our claims, and we can go back as far as five years. And typically, they recoup at a 24% or a 20% rate. So potentially, there's $28,000 a year in, in claims that we could reopen and reclaim. This is similar to what occurs under power plans, um, you know, where your, a company will come in to audit your power bills to find out whether there was any mistakes made. Same process occurs under this. Um, we had two companies, Part D Advisors, and the other company was Medicaid D, Part D. Anyways, I'm recommending that we go with Part D Advisors. Um, they've been doing this a long time. Their RFP, if you, if you carefully, carefully review the RFP, um, process that I went through, I think it's clear to see that Part D Advisors is a better answer. Our brokers recommended that we do this because there is money out there to be had. The problem is, there's, even under a normal circumstance, um, Part D, Part D drugs and Part B drugs can often be interchangeable, and they can be identified, um, and reimbursed if they're, if they're properly documented within the audit process. So I think there's some money to pick up there. I think potentially, we're looking at somewhere around $100,000 over five years. It's well worth it. It doesn't cost us. Um, their charge is based upon 25% of recouping, whatever the fee is. So it's to our advantage to do it. I don't think it's any real risk to us. And the reason for moving as quickly as we can is because we can open up 2011's year if we get it started by March.
Questions? Discussion, be none all in favor?
Aye.
All's carried.
That's the last one in that memo, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. We have another?
Yeah. I need someone to, I don't believe you have this argument.
Yeah, I do. Do you want to? Um, so it's a resol, let me see, what am I going, green?
Green to the CSEA contract.
Yeah.
Resolution authorizing the CSEA and North Country Community College contract as proposed by the parties and presented to the board.
Ratifying.
Ratifying.
Move by, Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Merrihugh. Mr. Giordano.
Get closer, John.
Discussion? Be none all in favor?
Aye.
All's carried. Hard to believe with a guy with the name of Scazafava can-
No, it's not.
Okay, uh, next, Judy is on the wheel.
Yep, resolution authorizing award of purchase and installation of a Well McLean Model H-780 boiler in the total amount of $13,188 to Mike Morrison's Sons Heating and Plumbing.
Move by, Mr. Monty, second by Mr. Marnell and Mr. DePaul. Discussion? Be none all in favor?
Aye.
All's carried.
And the last one, um, resolution, am I reading this one?
Yes.
To inter, introduce the local law to amend the salary paid to the director of the community resources by increasing the base salary by $10,000.
Motion by, Mr. Morrow, second by, Mr. DePaul and, Mr. Miga. Discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Morrow.
Well, first of all, I wanted out there that Mike Mascheranos, who we're talking about right now, never asked me about any increase in his salary. I don't think he asked any of us that. But he was looking for another position here in the county. And I, and I am very biased in that, and I'll tell it right up front. I don't want him leaving his position for Director of Community Services Resources because I got a big project going in my town, and we've got two more that he's looking at for me. And I'm saving, and all the rest of us supervisors are saving a lot of money when he works on these grants that we have. I used to pay another entity, actually, I should say before I became supervisor and a little bit after I was supervisor. When you have somebody administer your grants outside of the county, you don't get them for free. That money, that administration cost, fee that they charge, doesn't go to your project. Now, all the grant money we get for our town and the other towns go to our projects. We don't need to take $50,000 out to pay for a private entity to do the administration of it. And Mike's out there with his department looking for grant applications all the time, and he, and he sends us the emails on it. I personally don't even think $10,000's enough when I look at all the department heads that we have working here. We've done this in the past. Some go through, some don't go through. I hope this one goes through. But I think in the future, we need to even look at more, but I'll settle for the $10,000 now, as long as Mike does. But I really hope that everybody supports this because we need Mike Mascheranos where he is. I'll tell you right now, it would be a big loss to us.
Just for clarification, this resolution is to vote for the next step.
Correct.
Which is to amend the local law, which requires a public hearing. After the hearing, the actual resolution increase, the salary, will be voted on.
That's correct.
Further discussion? Mr. Marnell?
Yeah, I think Mike does an excellent job, and I think that $10,000 or even $15,000 or even $20,000 wouldn't be out of line at the proper time of the year to do so. Uh, we had a request from Personnel last winter, and I felt it was a legitimate request. I think she asked for $7,000 or $8,000, and I asked a motion to split it, and offered $4,000, there was no second on it. Uh, not to say that we couldn't live without Mike, we need him, and I think in that part, he does, he's done a lot for Town of Skid Lake, and all the towns probably, and the county. And to my knowledge, the Town of Skid Lake has received, uh, many grants, high grants, and we haven't funded Essex County. When you have a highway department come down and put up signs, you get charged. I think the towns that receive these grants that Mike worked on should reimburse the county for some of his services.
Further discussion?
How will this work then? Would it be a l'absent payment, or?
No, it'd be an adjustment to the base salary.
Okay.
And again, Mike has gotten into this, um, and not necessarily by any of his own doing. Essentially, he was asked what it would take to stay, and a number was proposed, and he agreed to that. Um, but the way I look at this is, this is an adjustment to the position of Director of Community Resources. Um, I've advised Mike to stay in the process for the, um, applications for DSS Commissioner. I don't know how that's gonna play out, and I don't think he does either. I think we should leave him in that process. If in fact, um, he turns out to be selected for that position, um, you may be looking at, um, something different with this position. The thing that this resolution does is, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, um, you can always pay a department head less, you can't pay him more without the local law.
Yeah, the local law, when we, we're required in the beginning of every year to post the salaries of our elected appointed officials, and Mike's salary was posted. So in order to change that, to increase it in any way, it requires a local law.
Yeah.
But to decrease it, it does not.
Right.
Uh, and, you know, we can start this ball moving with this local law, and should something happen with the Department Social Services chairmanship, where I think you're gonna get an answer before we actually vote on the law anyway, so, um, you should get it, get it in the pipeline and get it moving.
Yeah, that's my way of looking at this. This is ultimately an adjustment to a department head's salary. If in fact, the individual that you decide is gonna hold that position is worth the money, you pay him. If you don't, you don't. Um, if he's selected for something else, then that's a different issue altogether. But this is the process in order to adjust that salary. We've had a long discussion, I think, a number of times, as to whether this salary was paid correctly anyways. Um, when you look at the planning director that would be paid more than this position is right now, had he remained in it and he had half the size position, you gotta remember, the Director of Community Resources is a combined department of planning and youth in community resources altogether. Um, so this is a salary adjustment to a department head position. However, who ends up with it ultimately is up to this board down the road.
Further discussion? And I just want to expound on what Mr. Morrow stated, is that this is not something that Mr. Mascherinos initiated. This came from within. Um, he hasn't asked for this. Mr. Marnell made a good point also, is the, uh, the timing and so on. But anyway, well, let's take a vote on it. Um, and again, this is just to go to the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed. Mr. Marnell's opposed. Resolution carries.
Should I be able to vote here?
We can set a date.
No, this was-
What about before, the week's meeting, next month or?
So, next month's ways to meet.
Like nine o'clock or something?
Nine a.m. next month's ways to meet. Please agree.
Monday, March 27.
Monday, March 27, 9 a.m. will be the public hearing. Are there any other resolutions to come before the board, Mr. Pallidi?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, um, move a resolution of congratulations and recognition to Lowell Bailey for winning the first-ever world championship by an American athlete in biathlon. He's a three-time Olympian from Lake Placid, won the 20K biathlon, uh, race thereby, in Austria thereby, um, uh, being named, um, and qualifying him as the first American, um, for the 2018 U.S. Olympic Winter Games team.
unanimous second.
I get it, I get it.
Anything, any other resolutions to come before the board? If not, Dan, you have something you want to-
I just have one thing. Um, everybody has by now seen, uh, the draft of the, uh, Taxi Cab Local Law, and I do, are there any comments or anything, or if I'm catching you by surprise, if you want to give me any comments? I have received some and did adjust the law, uh, and returned it to everyone as I saw fit. But if there's any other tweaks that you want to make to this thing, let me know because what we're going to be doing is, uh, it'll be introduced at a regular board. Same thing as a regular, uh, typical local law, we'll have a public hearing, uh, set, and then at the next regular board, which would be in April, uh, this would be passed. But if anybody has any comment they want to, to make, uh, let me know. And that's pretty much it.
Dan, anything? Anything further to come before this? Or if not, we stand adjourned.